I can, go ahead, huh? I called the meeting that was recessed on, or recessed on January 18th, 2011. Back into session, back to order. Okay. First item on the agenda, new business, consider grants for Caterpillar. Do you need to...
I'm gonna have Mr. Talbot come up and explain it. He did an outstanding job on page seven of the agenda summarizing the significant provisions in the agreement, and I thought it might be best if he goes over that with the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The background on this, I think is important for you to know. Back in June of 2010, this board approved an economic incentive grant to Caterpillar in a sum of $900,000 through the Lee County Economic Development Commission. At that time, there was a belief, strong belief, that there was a great probability that this amount of money could be matched through state funding sources, and that has come to be true. The One NC Fund has agreed to also give Caterpillar economic incentive contingent upon a number of different things, but primarily that the county would match the amount of grant by the One NC Fund. So, the background is that this committee, this commission, has already approved an economic incentive grant, and what's before you now are two documents reflecting the NC One agreement to grant a sum of money to Caterpillar upon the execution of two documents. One of the documents is a performance agreement between Caterpillar and One NC, as well as the county. The county is a party to that agreement and must sign that agreement. That performance agreement sets out specific performance criteria that Caterpillar must meet, including a capital investment of over $30 million, including providing jobs, new jobs, and maintaining new jobs through the year 2015. Although the One NC grant itself terminates in 2015, Caterpillar has also entered into a separate agreement for a community economic development plan that continues through 2015. So you will see in the materials, jobs being required to be created and retained through that period of time. This board's signature, or the county's authorized representative's signature, is required to be placed on the agreement between Caterpillar and One NC that contains the performance agreement that Caterpillar has to meet. The second document that's involved here is the county's grant agreement, where we agree to do certain things. Primarily, our obligation is simply to provide the matching funds. You will see other things in there, specifically that the county has some responsibility in providing certification to One NC, that the performance agreement criteria that Caterpillar has agreed to have been met. So, two agreements that must be signed in order to get the grant from One NC. One is the Caterpillar Performance Agreement, and two is the county's grant agreement. I believe that is it in summary, except there is a short deadline. The reason, as you well know, this meeting is being held today is that these documents must be returned to the Department of Commerce before you would have met at your next regular meeting.
I have a question about the dates.
Yes, sir.
The first page of the NC One Grant...
Yes, sir.
It says, "You'll be unemployed if these haven't been returned by December 15th, 2010." And then, it's again on another page over here, same thing, and then there's one on February 11th, 2010.
Yes, sir.
Did we amend that? I didn't see any word that says the date that's amended.
The terms of the agreement with the county and One NC is that we must sign the performance agreement, acknowledging the performance agreement, and our own grant agreement within 60 days of the signature of Caterpillar's agreement, which I think was the 10th or 11th or something.
12th of December.
Yes. So, those dates were put in there in anticipation of quicker action, but no, we have not missed the deadline, if that's the big question.
Okay. That's one of the wonders.
We just on, I think it was Thursday of last week, spoke with a One NC representative about some date changes that needed to be made, and he thought they were in error as well, and gave us the contact number for the Department of Commerce's in-house counsel, who we will have notified of this, but there's no deadline missed, we're on target.
So, what the Commissioners have given already is enough to match the funds?
More than match the funds, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And it is my understanding that that is going to be a one-time payment after the site development expenses are established.
Certainly.
That is correct.
I have a question about the, you said there were two parts to this agreement that...
Well, two separate agreements.
Okay, two, all right, two separate agreements, one of which you said was to commit, again, to the funding, our matching share for the One Carolina Fund?
We must agree to match dollar for dollar the grant given by One NC.
Clarify for me, please, Dale. Did we not already commit to doing that in a vote last fall?
Yes, this commission did, but part of the grant agreement requires the execution of documents to the Department of Commerce every time a disbursement is going to be made. That certification is that we have provided the funds, and that based upon paperwork we'll get, or can get from Caterpillar, that they've met the performance agreement.
So, for any vote that would be taken today, we're just agreeing to do what we committed to do last summer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, that we're not voting for additional monies to be contributed to Caterpillar.
Not at all.
All right.
And, One Grant, those increment, or those installments, will come to us?
Yes, sir.
And that's the reason we have to provide certification that the criteria has been met, and then that validates it, and those monies will be passed on to...
Yes. Caterpillar. Right. You said it precisely correctly. The grant is to, the One NC grant is to the county. The county will then disperse the money to Caterpillar upon satisfactory proof that they have met the performance criteria. When the money is given to the county, and as it is dispersed to Caterpillar, the county then certifies back to the Department of Commerce that the funds have been made and we're satisfied that the performance criteria have been met.
One other question. What is exactly One NC Fund? Is that a sort of arms-length foundation or group? How would you describe that?
Well, it is...
Part of the North Carolina Department of Commerce?
It is a fund administered through the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and the fund itself has several sources. And Bob, maybe you can help here. Do you know the particular source of funding through the Department of Commerce for this particular grant?
It comes straight from the General Assembly. It's an appropriation made every year, or every budget year.
And is this a sort of new wrinkle that we may see in the future, or is this just a unique kind of...
Well, this is a continuing resource, as long as it is appropriated by the General Assembly. There will be money available for other projects, not only to this county, but to other counties.
So, you might say that this is part of the comprehensive package that has been developed to entice Caterpillar, you know, to stay here?
Well, certainly, that is true. It's not just the county, but the state has taken upon itself to provide additional economic incentives to Caterpillar, not only through this One NC grant, but through the Community Economic Development Grants.
Well, not to beat this to death, but just one other part of it. So, in the fall when we approved this, this, I don't recall, was discussed at that time, and so is this something that has developed since then?
I can answer that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we...
Yeah, we did approve the incentive agreement with Caterpillar, and then, if you recall, we were waiting for the announcement to be made, and we waited about three months after we approved it. And, you know, once we approve our grant, then, you know, the EDC can take that grant and go to the state and try to match those dollars with state dollars to maximize how much money we can get from the state. And at that time, other opportunities came up with the state, and our deal kind of ended up with the state getting rolled into other deals with Caterpillar. That's why you see other plans referenced in the agreement. And so, the state tried to roll this all together to make it one deal, and that occurred after we had approved. This isn't the first time we've been involved in these One North Carolina Grants. It's the first time that we've been involved with one that's been this size and has required... I made the argument the other day, and they said this wasn't necessarily true, but this is really the first time they've required this type of signature and commitment from the county. So, it's just a little bit different procedurally, even though we've been involved in this in the past.
Would you say that this is therefore sort of a tightening of...
Absolutely.
By the state?
And I think, I think a lot of that had to do with the Dell deal.
Very good.
I would like to commend whoever was the author of this document, and the level of detail, and particularly in the clawback provisions. And I don't know if that was, if we had any part in that, or if this was something contrived at the state level, but I know several of us Commissioners have noted how well structured this agreement is for enforcement, and the significant tracking measures that have been put in place, and I would commend that to our EDC as a good model for what we ought to be doing in the future if we're going to propose incentive packages for local corporations or new businesses coming in here. I really like some of the detail in this, and I really think it's good to hold the companies or the corporations accountable to do exactly what they told us, and these compliance measures and the clawback provisions are really well done.
One more question. I wasn't on the board whenever this was voted on, but I don't remember from sitting here that we had a provision in our agreement for them to report anything back to us. Do we have to amend our agreement to get that documentation to provide to One NC?
No, sir, you do not. In the Caterpillar Performance Agreement, there are specific terms which require Caterpillar to give to the county as...
Okay, I didn't see that.
All right, that is on page five of the Performance Agreement, paragraph 7.3. It reads, "Subject to any applicable federal or North Carolina laws or regulations respecting employee privacy..." Employee privacy. "...the company," meaning Caterpillar, "agrees that any duly authorized representative of the applicant," and that refers to Lee County, "or DOC, shall at all reasonable times and on a reasonable notice have access to and the right to inspect, copy, audit, and examine all of the relevant books, records, and other documents relating to the grant and the fulfillment of this agreement," referring to the Performance Agreement, "throughout the grant performance period and for a period of six months thereafter."
Six years.
But it doesn't say specifically Lee County there.
Well, Lee County is the applicant. And I didn't look at the definitions, but probably...
That language, Dale, if I may, that language there says that we have the right to go request the information, but it doesn't put them on a recurring cycle of reporting in some format to us, correct?
Not to us. Their only reporting requirement is a part of the One NC Grant and the CETA Grant, and under the terms of those agreements, Caterpillar must prepare an annual grant report certified under oath by Representative Caterpillar, setting out their data concerning meeting the performance criteria. And we will have access to that document as well, as will the DOC.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say, I agree with what Commissioner Walmsley said. I like the provisions in this term, the One North Carolina Grant. I like some of the language in here, and it's something that we might want to later date, sit down with EDC and go over with them, and see if maybe we might tweak ours a little more, make it more presentable to our whole board.
I think that's good. I have a couple of questions on process, on how this verification is going to occur. Part of this agreement, which I learned when I saw this, was that Caterpillar is agreeing to maintain the jobs they already have, and so, there were some that they mentioned, a total of, I think, 700 and some between the Sanford and the Cary facility. What will we be presented with as a baseline of what the Sanford ones are, so that we kind of, on the existing jobs, kind of know what's there? And then, secondly, what's the basis for the verification for the board? And if I'm going to be signing off on this, I guess I want to know. But in the past, and John and I talking to a couple of different county managers, I guess last week and whenever we were at the association meeting, they work with their local ESC office, North Carolina Unemployment Security Commission, to get that data. So, I guess my thinking is, if we're going to be signing off on that, I want to be able to see that data. So, how's this process going to work? I just don't want to be presented with something that somebody says, "We created these jobs." I want to see verifiable data.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. So, the answer to both questions, I think, is going to be the same, and that is, the verification from Caterpillar will come in the form of its annual certified under oath grant report under the CETA provisions. We can, the county can, as you indicated, on its own, check the data with ESC, or the other remedy is for us to notify the company that we need this particular information, or we're going to come out and do an audit of a particular area of the performance review. So, the certification under the CETA agreement will be the primary confirmation of the performance, but we have the other remedies available to us.
Okay.
As far as the initial job number, Mr. Hudes and I met with them Thursday, and they are going through that right now with the state. They have to file a quarterly UC-101 or IC-101 form with the Employment Security Commission, and that will be the basis used for their initial number. And then, as we're going forward, we can get a copy of that report from the Employment Security Commission, and that will be our, when we have to sign the performance, not only will we have to look at that, but we'll also have to look at, make sure that they created the investment amount that they said that they would create on our books. It will be certified, both those numbers.
I had a concern on whether, you know, why don't they report that directly to us if we're having to verify to One North Carolina that this is taking place?
We can ask them to provide us a copy of the UC-101 when they provide it to the Employment Security Commission. And so, that's just kind of their protocol, and we can get that information as well.
Okay, that's where I had a concern over our initial agreement. I don't think that's in there, and we might need to go back and modify that.
You're speaking of the two agreements before the commission today. Candidly, sir, we do not have time to do that, given the deadlines required of this commission's signature.
No, I don't mean that we have to do it now, but...
Talking about in the future.
In the future, we need to make sure that that's in there, so that we get the reports directly, instead of having to wait on somebody else to process.
Yes, sir. This is primarily a DOC, Department of Commerce document, but I think they'd probably be very receptive to that kind of input and suggestion, because this new form is a work in progress.
They won't be requesting their first lump sum from the Department of Commerce until, what, December of this year?
Yes.
After December 31st of this year?
That's correct.
Okay, which, my next question, and this may not be, this may be a question you can't answer, but let's say on January 1st of next year, they've created 150 of those new jobs. Let's say after the first quarter, they've had to lay off some folks because they just don't have the orders in, and that continues for the second, third quarter, fourth quarter, they're back up to that number. So, is this, are these jobs, like, for 12 months, or just based on what their latest quarterly report with the Employment Security Commission is?
My reading of both the Performance Agreement and the company's, and the county's grant agreement is that in the situation you described, as long as at the end of the grant year, you mentioned next year, that Caterpillar had those permanent jobs on books, they would be counted as having met the performance requirement. The little twist of it that makes it better for the county is that the Performance Agreement requires them not only to create, but retain through the grant year that's involved. So, if in grant year 2012, which would be next grant year, they didn't retain all of the jobs that they initially created, they wouldn't be counted as meeting the performance criteria. That's my reading.
Mr. Talbot?
That is...
Let me read you the last paragraph in this thing.
Yes, sir.
And it says, "Caterpillar's obligation beyond eligibility to close out, December 13th, 2013," it says, "must provide the Department of Commerce a pro rata reimbursement from North Carolina funds dispersed at the rate of $2,048 per job failed to be created." So, Caterpillar's kind of tied.
It is, and that reflects the incorporation of the CETA Grant, which goes beyond 213. I think it extends out to 215.
215, you got it right.
So, they must meet those requirements, or face that specific clawback.
Would you agree that retaining a position is slightly different than filling that position, having it filled?
Yes, sir, and in, I would. And in the agreement, I didn't highlight it, but I can find it if the commission wants me to fairly quickly. There is a specific provision about if layoffs were required, then the new jobs created to fill the layoffs don't count toward their performance requirements.
And I guess I have one other request, and, you know, this one was a very complicated deal. You know, we've got $900,000 from Lee County Funds, the One North Carolina Fund is like $600,000. That does not include the J Dig, the IDF, or the federal grant for some of the road improvements. So, it really doesn't include, you know, the portion of the transmatic building that we bought to put the equipment in to train. So, I just think from a transparency standpoint, I would like to see the total amount involved in this from all sources of taxpayer funds, just so the general public knows, you know, what this has been. Is that something we can do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, J Dig is completely different from this One North Carolina Fund?
Yes, ma'am. It's tax credits, and in this particular instance, it's several million dollars that Caterpillar could earn by creating these jobs. So, you know, I've seen various figures of what that would be, but I think it's safe to say it'd be over $2 million.
And what is our status with the ID, is it IDF? Which is the road grant from the state and the federal grant? Do you think those are coming through?
We are, the IDF money has been set aside. We are, you know, we still have to have the application in and have it formally approved, and we're trying to get $500,000 there, and then trying to get a similar amount from the EDA, and that application deadline is March 15th.
That's for the road improvement, to finish the road improvement?
And to whatever money's left over, we'll work on the building as well.
John, you have any kind of time on when these road improvements will come, or what part of the project?
Well, we're tied to, the EDA grant can't start any of the work until they approve the grant. So, we're kind of tied to them, and, you know, we really need to have work started on the road, you know, in the summer, because once they start picking up production here towards the end of the year, they need to have that in and out, because it's going to get busy.
What about site development? Have you got, how do you...
We met with them Thursday to review that, and they have spent more than $900,000. I haven't seen the receipts, but I can just tell by what they've moved around in dirt out there.
So, it's already stored?
Oh, they are, they are, they are, if it wasn't for the weather, they would probably already have the pad poured and ready to start putting steel up. But they've been, the weather's, the winter weather's been a little rough for them, but they have moved the dirt, they leveled the, I didn't realize when I looked at the plan how many, what they were doing. And it is, if you haven't been back up in there, you need to go back up in there. There's still a lot of, a lot of dirt being moved, and...
Pay attention, see if it was local contractors doing it.
All the Caterpillar equipment had Sanford contract, you know?
That's correct.
And yes, I did ask them if it was a requirement that they use Caterpillar equipment. They said yes.
That's good.
And are they, didn't, didn't, in our original agreement with them, didn't we require that they have to submit invoices to us?
Before we would pay, and we should get those invoices in the next three to four weeks, is what I was told Thursday. They're working on those right now.
And the Golden Leaf Funds are there for the equipment?
For the community college to purchase the equipment. $448,000, I believe is that number.
That's another one to add to this tier.
And actually, I said $500,000 on the EDA grant, but if we, if we match the IDF money and the Golden Leaf money, we would actually be eligible for $900,000 in EDA grants. So, all this money, you know, as it's awarded, then you can take it and try to match it with other funds, and it's kind of like a domino effect, you know, as, and in this particular case, the first domino that had to fall was us approving the local grant, and then everything else came into play after that local grant was approved.
So, same $900,000 can be used for the IDF grant match and the federal grant match, and is that what you're saying?
Well, yes and no. You're, you know, it makes you eligible for other grants. May not necessarily make the match, but the one expense that we, that we did that we have not been able to match anything on is the purchase of the transmatic building, which is, which is a shame, but that did show, you know, commitment on our part, and has helped us become eligible, you know, or at least we feel it's helped them try to come to the plate and help us with other things.
And we saved in that process, didn't we?
Saved.
That building.
Well, we, we got a good deal on the building, and we already have a tenant in there, and we now have two other companies that have contacted Bob who are interested in the building. So, we haven't even advertised or tried to go out and recruit, and we've got, people have heard about it and are coming to us to try to rent some of that space, so I'm kind of in shock over it, actually.
But we did say, having that act, effectively, we could have been the second person coming in, but we did move it away, we did it to the right.
Linda, I believe you need a motion. I'd like to make it, not to cut off discussion, but I think I'd like to know that we approved this as presented.
So, John, what kind of action do you need us to take? We need to...
Authorize the chairman to execute both agreements.
There's a resolution.
Is that a motion?
And there's a resolution in here to that effect. And there's a resolution in here to that effect.
Just made sure.
Motion has been made to authorize the county to execute the resolution, accepting this agreement. Is there any further discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dale.
Yes, ma'am, I think I'll just stand up here.
His next one is his. It has my name on it, but it really is, was generated by our legal department, Mr. Hall and Mr. Talbert, so...
This board, several months ago, I think before the new members arrived, decided to invoke a provision of the county's franchise agreement with Charter Communications that allows the county to obtain free what's referred to as a PEG channel, the PEG being the acronym for political, educational, and governmental channel. Mr. Crumpson made contact with the appropriate person in the Charter Communication Chain of Command, the gentleman in South Carolina, who's their governmental representative, and requested that channel be activated. When council was looking at the franchise provision, we noticed in there, the section that's before you, for considered amendment, which allows the county unilaterally to adjust the amounts of liquidated damages in the franchise to reflect any increases in the consumer price index. Further investigation disclosed that the provision had not been amended since the date the contract became effective, 1998. And given that we were not sure of Charter's response, or the timeliness of that response to Mr. Crumpson's request, we thought it might be a good idea to preemptively change the liquidated damages, so that if they didn't do what they were supposed to do under the franchise, the cost to them would be greater, about a third greater, as outlined in the abstract and as shown on the attachments. The CPI has increased over 33% since 1998. So the $100 liquidated damages provisions contained in the franchise would, in today's dollars, be worth 133. So it's a simple change that this board can do, unilaterally, but must be, according to the franchise, done by resolution. There was, or is, another $500 liquidated damages provision in there. But the way Mr. Hall and I read the contract, that was for initial performance of getting the cable system up and running. Even though we don't think we can impose a $500 penalty, we have before you the proposal that you go ahead and increase it anyway, in case we can use it. And I think that figure then would be $668 a day, rather than $500 a day.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this sort of an incentive for them to perform, to continue to fulfill their responsibility?
Well, my personal opinion is, it certainly will be, because we're going to send them notice that these penalties have been increased, so any reasonable charter officer might think, "Well, these guys are serious. If we don't do what we've said we're going to do, then they've taken the step of increasing our liability."
And is there any indication that maybe they need to step up to the plate a little more than they have been?
Well, thus far, as with all large corporations, they have not moved as fast as the county may have desired them to do so. But the request was made toward the end of October holiday period, various things of that nature. Our most recent communication with them indicates that they are contacting the technological people at the community college responsible for the interface of the community college's equipment with the cable equipment to get it up and running. Our expert, Dr. Seppi, who's developing the PEG channel for the county, has indicated to us that the actual technical work shouldn't take, and this is his opinion, more than a couple of weeks. And that's important, because there is funding available from the state to be applied toward the startup costs, the operation costs. But to get that funding, the channel has to have put on air a certain number of hours of new programming. The reason I mention that is that we do have a soft deadline, and John, what was that?
March 15th.
Yeah.
And that would, that would generate around $30,000 in revenue for the county this year, end of this year. So that would offset, you know, some of the, the cost of purchasing the equipment, which is around 90,000. So, you know, we also have come into some consideration, Chatham County's interested in participating and help offset some of that. So the deal's coming together, but we need Charter to approve the channel, because I feel a little, you know, like, you know, before we start purchasing equipment, we need to have the channel.
How much longer does the contract remain with Charter?
I believe it's 13, end of 13.
That, and just, just one other thought, are they otherwise viable and performing? You know, the economy, and things change, and I have this feeling about that, but...
Well, I did some limited research online for what that's worth. And they have, over the past, I think, within five years, restructured. They're now known as Charter Communications, Romanule II LLP. And I went to check their financials, and they appear to be pretty good. I checked some local complaint lines, and they seem to be in good financial situation all over. Their headquarter report is good, and I'm not vouching for that personally, I'm just telling you what I found.
Do we, are we the party to the contract, or is it ourselves and the city?
This is our own contract.
Yeah, there's two separate contracts involved.
Yeah, the city has their own franchise.
And in 2013, that will come up for review and renewal?
Well, actually, in...
2013, the state takes complete control. That's why getting these channels is important now, because if you don't exercise it before two, you know, 2013, it may not be in the state's franchise. So go ahead and get what you can get out of your current agreement, and then when the state, you know, takes that over completely in, you know, 2013, maybe there'll be some other benefit in there that the state can generate. But that's one of the things that's kind of pushing us along here.
In fact, Charter notified the county officially, as it's required to do, on July 15, 2010, that at the termination of this contract, they would enter into a state franchise, a state-regulated franchise. Maybe, I think it was three years ago, the state passed this Cable Television Communications Act that made uniform the franchise agreements that cable carriers have with municipalities or counties.
So Mr. Hall was saying, as I understand it, that the state will take over the regulatory, rather than us, in that year. So sort of takes that monkey off of our back. Would that be unfair?
Actually, we lose the franchise fees, right? Which is how much a year, 200 or 300,000?
I think there's a provision in the legislation, it's anything with the General Assembly, they can take that money at any time they want. I was getting ready to say something, now I just stopped myself. It's just like anything else we get through the legislature. It can be gone in a heartbeat. I don't know how much it is.
But currently, it's, it's over a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that we get paid in franchise fees, right?
Is that right?
Well, it's based upon subscriber fees, it's a percentage of subscriber fees, and I didn't look at what last year's was. So as the subscribers go up, what the county gets goes up.
And if we're running the PEG channel, we'll still get that revenue for running the PEG channel, so...
Okay.
But then again, we're dealing with our legislature, so...
So do they have to, 2013, to complete all of this, or is there...
No.
Different date provisions that they should have been meeting, or...
No, not that I'm aware of. As I say, we just ran across this as we were looking at making a request for the PEG channel. The PEG channel pursuant to the franchise agreement, we have to give them 60 days' notice of our desire to activate the PEG channel. The franchise is not really clear on whether that's a performance deadline for them. It certainly can be read that way, and that's the way we are reading it. And that's the way we've communicated with Charter, giving them these deadlines. But the 13 date has nothing to do with activation of the PEG channel. That's just the termination date of their franchise.
So we don't really have anything in writing that says, "By this date, you'll have it in place"?
Oh, we have made that demand, yes, sir.
In writing?
Yes, sir.
So the 60 days has, in our view, has run. So now we're, we're going to the next step to try to apply the pressure to say, "Okay, the 60 days are up. We want, we want at least acknowledgement in letter form that, that we're going to do this, so we can proceed."
And whose obligation is it, John, to make sure that certain standards required by this agreement are met?
You're talking about the service standards that are, that, I think some jurisdictions have taken the, the stand that with what the state has done in getting involved, a lot of those phone calls now go to the Attorney General's Office, I believe. And so if someone were to call you and say that, you know, they're having problems with their, you know, their reception or whatever, sure, we could give them Charter's phone number, but really, they, they could file that complaint with the Attorney General's Office, and they have a procedure in place for handling those calls now. But it's, it's transitioning to them being, the state being responsible for it all.
Madam Chairman, I move that we enact a resolution adjusting liquidated damages to reflect change in the CPI.
Okay, on page 35 of your packets, there is proposed resolution, and we've got a motion on the floor to accept that resolution. All those, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Resolution, or the motion unanimously passes. John, do you have anything to relate to us before we...
No, ma'am.
So we had our commissioner's comments at the last meeting, so I just need a motion to it. Oh, Robert?
Yeah, I got a couple of my thing. One is, I thought that Mr. Hughes was still here. I see that he's not. A question or concern that I have is, I listened to several of you indicate how strongly you think this agreement package was. Then why wouldn't that be an assignment for the director or staff to go in and coordinate and send back to us for review? I'm not one who likes to meet for the sake of meeting. There are some things that people are hired to do that then it needs to be left with them to present it to this board. That's a very strong concern I have. The second part of that is, while I certainly understand the reason the public hearing for ally was pulled off, what I don't understand is, and maybe one of you can answer, how it got here in the first place? Because it's a recommending body and presented to this board. Quite frankly, it was embarrassing, very embarrassing. And I think this board needs to take a different view of how committees are supposed to work. Because there was no need for us to go to that extent as we did. We probably would not have had this meeting but for that, that recommendation to us. So, Madam Chair, I'm just asking that if, and I've said this in the past, if you're serious about economic development, then we ought to take a more serious approach considering it's done properly.
And I think that on our retreat on February 11th, this will be a major topic on that day, is that correct, John?
Yes, ma'am. And I, but I agree with Mr. Reeves that I think sometime in our haste, we don't dot all the i's and cross all the t's, and I think in this particular case, that is what happened. And we should probably, and I'm just as guilty as, as they are, in not making sure it's there. So I think going forward, we'll, when recommendations come before this board, the whole public hearing will make sure everything's in order before we, before we even come to the board to discuss it.
You know, a greater concern is that I don't know how we may be viewed by the state from here on out in terms of trying to do business, because they've got a dog in the fight as well. And so we sort of left them hanging. I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to standing our ground when we need to, but I think we ought to be on better footing than we were on this last, this last one.
I agree, and I think your points are very well taken. Okay, I guess I need a motion to it.
Go do it, John.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.